Minutes that they're supposed to be, but they, but that should be always recorded. Always something more for next time.
Hey Keith.
Hi.
Have you looked at your emails today?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, did you see this? I'm gonna talk about it.
Yes, so I'd say, yeah, I'm not sure I understand what's going on with that, but yeah, I mean the.
Okay.
Is this, they've been wanting to change the area.
Well, basically, like if you want to sue his power, before you can sue them, you have to hear from a dentist, I guess. And that's kind of the first level lawsuit, so their offer is to sue me today.
Okay.
So I'm gonna recommend we do an executive section, that way we can concentrate on these kind of strategies that we want to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, why, why, why do they want to pursue us?
Well, they're basically saying electricity utilities are inadequate, they're, they talk about.
Yeah, right, right, okay. We need to have, we'll be notified in the case of that, because when we have this executive section, it's not like we want to know about it. So I think I was asking, I think that is not, not notified.
Oh, wow, okay.
But also I noticed when I was going through, like we signed our, the seller on this last. We did not, I noticed probably one that we had made before, that the court treasurer is the, they hold it like sixty-six fifty a year or more. But that's in case, they're telling the other thing, but we've not made any. How that got to be a different, totally different number, to be that much and that much different without a council decision to do, do something like that. Because that's the one you brought to us.
Right.
But where did, where did you come up with those numbers that you were supposed to do it like that?
That was from, we wrote the first draft and it was talked about, and then I, that I talked to Keith about it, and then there were changes that were recommended, and then I made the changes. And then before you voted on it, I presented it and I said, hey, here are the sections that we've changed, and that was one of the ones that we talked about.
Okay, well, suggestions and changes, that's it, that's the type of thing that I thought that we were supposed to have executive sections to do, to make changes on the, on things like that, not just. At the last, because that, that got totally missed on what the, on what the, what the changes were that, that, and that wasn't right.
Okay.
That did, that, I mean.
But those.
With all the, but if, if we made, we made the decision, we accepted it, but, but that was not right, that it did, that it should not be made, decisions should be made outside of council meetings.
And that wasn't, that was a discussion about what, what the president wanted the terms of ordinance to say, say.
Then we should have had time to look it over and read it and make the, not just, that I didn't realize, it, it should have been pointed out more, that they, I mean. We didn't have time to look that over, and they, and they, you brought it in, just here it is, that they, us doing that and just bringing things in and to, stuff in front of our face and saying, here, sign this, that they, that, that's not right.
Well, I pointed out there was, there were changes to the ordinance, however, those changes were made, I guess if you want more time to look at something and tell us.
Then they're gonna have to. Yeah, but they, but it just, with all the rigmarole we went through with Patty, I'm just getting her a little tiny bit more for insurance, and then we did, when we jumped.
Before the meeting starts.
Something, it just doesn't seem right, you see, something not right there, and then it's done, done behind, behind my back, that they. Cause that was done behind my back.
I can't hear you.
But they, yeah, you brought it, they brought it to us, but you didn't, didn't explain it to us.
What did you say?
They'd say, okay, that they, we didn't go through all the details of what, what the changes were.
Okay.
And you just said, just said that there was changes.
Right, but I would say, if, if I drafted ordinance, some people say, we don't want to promote this, so changes that we want to have, I mean, if you got ahold of me and said, these are the changes that I want made, I would love to, I would share it with the council. And then if your council would be supportive, yeah, they could pass it.
But you said there was just, there was just things that they, the way it was ordered to have to change from the last ordinance that they, that they, that they, that the way it was wrote up. What I understood, there was no basic substantial change in the, in it, just except that the way it was ordered, that it wasn't ordered right, is what you had said.
No, that's not how, that's not how.
That's what, that's what we did, that's what came into the meeting, that they, that it was, it was not a big, not a substantial change of any sort.
I wouldn't have made a comment like that, my comment would have been, here's an updated version, and then I affirmatively talked about the sections in there where I made changes, three or four of them. So, no, I'm not trying to do anything with anybody, that's not right, the terms that people asked me to put in there, that's what I'm putting in there.
Well, yeah, that's, that's funny how so many changes come. I don't have time for a couple years, and we would never do anything like this without an executive, that you don't get that, you don't get, if I called Jay and told him to do something right now. That he'd say, well, you need to have an executive session, and then, and you guys get together and get, and let me know what you want done.
Yes.
But then I can't, I shouldn't be able to call you up and say, change this.
So this is what I need to read.
That they, without the, with the, and then they, then you bring it in.
But there's a difference between if you have an ordinance that you already passed, and you're talking about wanting to change that, versus something that was not the pass, and it was presented, and then people say, we want to make changes to this. That's totally fair, I mean, I think we would have changed this, the reason something like this, we need an executive section, there's a lot of different moving parts.
Yeah, this, this is some big stuff, this is totally, I think, but they, like, like this year, with this, this executive meeting, I was not even notified.
I don't know anything about that, what was this for?
Budget, budget meeting workshop.
Okay.
But I didn't, until I walked in here tonight, I didn't, I didn't know, think about it.
Okay.
So to take that, I was not notified in the least little bit, and that's what, that's been, what's been going on. Is they, I'm, I'm left out, totally left out, not notified in the least little bit, and it's getting, where I'm getting pissed off.
Well, I would bring it up as an executive session, we can talk more about it.
Yeah.
These are like extra copies. Do you want me to leave them up yet?
Let me double check.
What's that?
Two gentlemen down the front room. I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start out with the first part of this meeting, it's gonna be a public hearing, and it's gonna be the first reading of the two thousand twenty-six budget for Baker Tilly. We have Amber Nielsen here, and I'll go ahead and go over this, this is ordinance resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five dash oh six. Do we need to do the top part of this one, Amber? Call the little detail print, or just the actual numbers, so. It's been a year since I did this.
Just do the actual numbers.
The actual numbers, okay, so we're gonna go through the funds here, that's what I'm gonna go through and read to everyone here, fund name, the first one is zero zero six one, is a rainy day. Adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy a zero, adopted tax rate is zero also, we'll go to the next one, is one oh one, is a general fund. The adopted budget is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars, adopted tax levy is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, adopted tax rate is point eight two eight two. And then we'll move on to local road and street, it's fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars, adopted tax levy is zero, adopted tax rate is zero also on that one. Seven oh eight motor vehicle highway is thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars, adopted tax levy is zero, and the tax rate is zero also on that one. Park and Recreation is eight thousand, one hundred dollars, adopted tax levy zero, and the tax rate is zero on that one also. Twenty-three seventy-nine, Commutative Capital Improvement Cigarette Tax, two thousand, three hundred dollars, adopted tax levy is zero, and the rate on that one is zero also. Commutative Capital Development is two thousand dollars, adopted tax levy is fourteen thousand dollars, the tax rate on that one is point oh eight seven two. So we have a total adopted budget of two hundred and thirteen thousand and a hundred dollars, adopted tax levy is a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Done here, Home Ruled Funds, Not Reviewed, Fund Name Economic Development Income Tax. Adopted budget is eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, then we are going to move on to our regular meeting, and we'll move on to the approval of the previous minutes from August twelfth. And the two thousand twenty-six budget workshop, has everybody had a chance to read those?
Yes, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as they're printed for the August twelfth.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's the documents, watch this one.
Okay, then we're gonna move on to the next one, the Budget Workshop Minutes, that was on Monday, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, did everyone get a chance to read that? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't, because I was never notified of the meeting. You sent an email.
I did send an email out, unfortunately.
Did not get, did not get one, I just, so. I can't approve, it's something that I don't know anything about.
So the next step we're gonna go to is the approval for the APB, so for this month, it's a hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-four point twenty-four. Is what we have done, so I have the letter to be signed.
I make a motion, we accept the council's payment vouchers as read.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, maybe comments, actually, nice to see what we're approving nowadays. Okay, then we're gonna move on to clerk treasures business.
Um, so we have a new clerk treasure, uh, new clerk, utility clerk, her name is Valerie, she is sitting right there, Valerie Colwell. So she's just been our utility clerk since August twelfth, and she's been doing a great job.
Yes, she has, and she's even nice.
So Eileen has been training her, and she's been doing phenomenal job, so. With that said, I will, I will need for her to, for the council to approve, for her to do, to conduct transactions and to do account information on behalf of. And agreeing, so this is the trust Indiana, I just need you guys to sign.
I need to make a motion on each one of them first.
Sure.
I make a motion, we accept, we add Valerie Col- Colwell to the trust Indiana account.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's just go ahead and do all of them at once, I make a motion that we put Valerie Colwell on the first merchant's account also.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let's do the third one last, and I make a motion that we put Valerie Colwell on the Interior Credit Union account also.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna go to the utility adjustments, for this month, we have a hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents for September. For residents, it's because the meter was reported misread, causing them to be overcharged, so this is for this one here.
I make a motion, will you accept the adjustment, billing adjustment?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have another one, there's another one for eighty, eighty-five, this one here happens to be filling the pool and watering the garden.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve that one.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this the minutes for the August?
This is for what?
The minutes for the, for the August, August.
Twenty-fifth or the?
We're gonna sign it on.
Yeah, did you, no, this one is the minutes for the budget.
Okay, so they, okay, and.
And this is.
I thought you signed two.
We make a, then, we say, I make a motion on this one?
I think we might have signed the wrong, did we mix up some paperwork there?
We did, so this is.
Yeah, so you, I make a motion, we accept the, the minutes on the, well, no, we, because I did, we find the minutes for that.
We already.
And it did, but I had the, I had made the motion to accept these minutes.
Right, so you, what you're gonna do is.
Right.
So I just need to sign this, this.
We need to sign, and then we need to approve the next one that we already accidentally signed.
We already, well, you guys, you guys did approve that.
Yeah, this is for the workshop.
Okay, well, we already did.
And you wanna, you, you wanted to not sign this because you said that you.
That was, okay, because yeah, it was, okay, that's the one that, well, the one that I did sign is the one I need to.
Yes, you need, you need to sign this one here, that's the minutes for the town meeting that we had last month.
What one did I sign then?
This is for the workshop, and which you were not present.
Which one did I pass over then? Cause I passed you one that was assigned that just they signed.
Uh, but that's, yeah, but this one's mine, but this is because it has a tag.
Okay. Okay, we did, that, yeah, if, if that is, okay. That's why we should, I knew we signed two, but I'd signed two, and it was, it was the same one that I'd signed, that I thought was two different ones, okay.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to ordinances and resolutions, I have here ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh five, which is a dormant water bond in interest fund transfer to water operating fund. So I make a motion that we sign this?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you, she has the original. Okay, we're gonna move on to fire and township business, and we have, who's from the fire department here?
Tyler.
I'm filling in for Kevin.
You're filling in for Kevin, okay, you look a little different than me, so I guess.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
Um, everything's been going pretty good, I don't really have anything else to add on this here, I guess Kevin wanted more information on the tornado siren update.
That is Ms. Amy Rose, sitting next to you, she has all the details on that.
Am I doing that now?
You can, let's get it out of the way.
Being that is fire, fire department business, right, well.
I do have, I do have something that I want you guys to bring to your attention, is that we have a giant brush pile out at wastewater plant.
Yeah.
And if you guys can try and work that in your training schedule, figure out when to start burning that thing, that would be great, so if you could mention that to Kevin for me.
Probably, we could probably work that in next month, cause this month we're doing a live burning of our saw.
Okay, okay, just, I don't care if it's this way or whatever, but it's, it's getting.
It's out by, uh, by that.
It's behind the wastewater plant, yes, yep, and Richard can take you out there and give you a tour, and the whole night, so, but if you guys can get that in your schedule, I'd appreciate that.
We'll take a look at it.
And I have matches. I have, I have a brush if you wanna have it.
And I'm sure there's plenty of nasty powder for you to pump onto it if you need to put it out.
Yeah, I haven't been back there to look at it, so.
So, we have a grant for, I believe we're applying for forty thousand, or fifty, I'm not sure, that's Olivia, she knows the amount that we're applying for, for the grant on the thirtieth. That you approved for us to apply for the town of Etna Green, on behalf of the fire station, so. In order to do that, we will need some letters of support, which I currently do not have, cause Olivia was out, but we just need you to approve. The letter of support signing by whoever would need to sign this, but in order to secure this loan, we will need a letter of support for the project from the town of Etna Green. And Olivia will write that letter for you.
Okay.
All we'll have to do is just put it on official Etna Green letterhead, if we have, is there such a thing?
Kinda.
Kind of, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I was like, I don't know, I've never seen.
I, I wanna change it, cause I'm not a fan of it, it's real.
It's kinda crude.
Okay, so whatever official thing that you have that is Etna Green, that we can make official for this grant, then we would need to put this letter that Olivia is going to write for us.
Yes.
And we would have to have the town board president sign that.
So we need to make a motion to.
I make a motion that we approve of the, uh, letter of support for the grant for the fire siren, and have the President Roberts sign it.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, we will be receiving a letter of support from Kip Shooter, who is the nine-one, or the EMA director, so he is, he has also agreed to put a letter of support in. I will need help, Suzie, if you could help me with this, this would be really great, so I will also, she asked, we would need to have some community members. Detailing their experience with the old siren, I think you two had talked about old siren potentially, and the need for an upgrade, so we'll need some members that have shared. Or can share about why it's important, from a community perspective, to upgrade the, the tornado siren, as well as any businesses that would be willing to put in letters of support. To state that it's important to have that letter of support, so if, Suzie, you can coordinate some of those additional letters of support, either prominent, it says prominent community members.
I don't know how proud that fat one is, but anyway.
I'm assuming who, these gentlemen are the prominent.
They are, they are.
So it says, prominent community members detailing their experience with the old siren, and the need for an upgrade, as well as businesses such as D and D, you know, anybody else that, other businesses that would be willing to do that, so. Um, we will obtain all that information, we're working with Kevin to get the narrative, as well as with Kip Shooter to do the narrative. Um, we will not have the opportunity to be able to present the narrative before we submit it for the grant, so I don't know if that's a problem, Nick, from like a perspective. They won't be able to approve the narrative, because this is the meeting, the only meeting in September, so.
Unless we make a motion at this meeting to.
And may, and it has to be approved by the end of this month, but.
It literally has to be submitted by September thirtieth, so there is not another meeting before the end of the month, so I wasn't sure how that worked.
And this is a narrative to apply for a grant?
It's the grant itself, so we are currently working on the narrative, as well as collecting the, the letters of support, so I don't know if the town board would officially need to review it. Before, or if they can make a blanket, like.
I would say a blanket would be fine, cause they've already given, they've already given authority for the applications.
It's not like it's a grant writer that we haven't worked with, they've worked with MACOG, and Olivia is the one who's writing it, so I'm assuming that they're comfortable with who's writing it, so.
So, our mo-, our motion already will cover that?
Yeah, I think the prior one's adequate.
Or do we need to add to it then?
If you feel that you want to.
I mean, I just, because you made a motion at the last meeting, I believe, that gave us permission, was that what the minute said, that gave us permission to pursue?
The grant, yes.
To pursue the grant, so it was to pursue it.
The grant, so would that be adequate, I'm assuming?
That should be, yeah.
Okay.
We just made a motion to.
The letter of support was the ne-, the next motion, I think that would probably be adequate, cause I don't think anything else needs to be done, the only other thing that we'll have to do. Um, is we will have to do a fund ordinance on this one, for what we talked about, we don't have to do one for the community park that we spoke about, but to receive the money. We will have to do an ordinance to receive the money, so Nick, that will have to be done at some point, and then to expend the money, but we don't have to do that until we receive the grant. Because it's not a hundred percent guaranteed, so we are hoping that we make a compelling case.
Yeah.
And we receive the grant, but if we do receive the notification that we have received the award, we would have to do a fund ordinance like we did with that at the green year.
Yeah, I could help with that.
So, but I would think that we wouldn't do that until we would actually receive the award letter from the folks, so.
Yeah, sounds good.
So these letters of.
The letters of support basically.
Do they have to be separate letters, or can you have one letter and a bunch of signatures?
Um, I think that having separate letters would be, because they're wanting, the more letters of support showing, because the, the grant is actually a, it's a grant that is nationwide.
Okay.
Would be thought that.
That we're applying for, so we want to show that there's a large amount of support from the small community, showing the need for this, cause you're building not only the narrative that Olivia will do, which is, she does great narratives about the need. But then showing the community's support for the project, as well as business support, the town's support, and then the county's support, so as many people as we can have letters of support. Sharing why it's super important.
I'll just go door to door.
If the entire town.
Sign this, no question, just sign it.
And Olivia can create, like she is willing to create a letter of support if, you know, I don't know if Ann would be willing to, you know.
Take it around, do the houses.
You know, be typed it up for them, and they, but probably they would want it to be like separate, you know, language or whatever.
Not a, not a form letter.
Yeah, not a form letter, so maybe they could take it and then put their own word. Yeah, not a form letter, so maybe they could take it and then put their own words or something, so.
Yeah.
Whatever makes it easier, we just have from now, which is the ninth of September until the thirtieth, when we have to get that in, so.
We have to have them, is there any certain amount that we need, should have, or more the better?
No, she just, Olivia just said, the more the better. The more the better, because you wanna show as much community-wide support as you can.
Okay.
So.
So on this, on this project, cause they, we've talked about this at past board meetings, uh, the current siren is manually operated.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, you definitely have um significant information for impact letters. Uh, the firefighters going in there manually turning this on, some of the board members dealing with manually turning this on in case of emergency. And then uh residential would be created. I would definitely identify them as impact letter and support letters. It's gonna make, it's gonna make a difference.
And Olivia can help us with that.
Okay.
You know, to get those together. But the, the whole point is to build the case as to why it's detrimental for the town of Etna Green to have this updated. Tornado siren, which we all know, it's just putting it, we know, in this room, it's just being able to verbally put that into a letter and the narrative for the grant.
We know.
So that the compelling case for someone that's in a completely different community, probably a different state, can read all of the information and say, oh yeah, this is really important to the building too, so.
Ask them if they would like to be the one to go push the button.
I would make sure.
During the tornado.
I would make sure I call them, so, so, um.
You, you have a recent event that that occurred.
Oh yeah, well, well, this is, I mean, I've lived here since I was sixteen years old, so yeah, it's happened, you know, so I've seen a couple of them, so. And yeah, you guys are older than me and you've had way more of them.
Be good to have a letter drafted and send to all residents asking for the, their, a letter on this?
I think getting that much support from this community is a little hard. I think we found that with the other thing, but. It would be nice, yes.
Or Suzie going door to door if she's offered to do that.
I don't have anything else to do.
If they, if they'll answer the door, I mean.
If they answer the door, that's a good.
They might see me in closed doors.
They might lock the door, yeah.
You know, and be able to communicate effectively. And what Olivia was gonna make it tonight, but she can give us some direction too, on what specifically the narrative that she's creating. But. The beautiful part about this grant is, it is one hundred percent grant. So there is no match. It's a full grant, there's no money needed. It's if. If Olivia can create the narrative and the letters can create the narrative, and we receive the award, then there is no money for Etna Green. It's just one hundred percent.
Then we can put the actual siren in Etna Green on the building.
On the building, it is, I'll show you, um, we did create this map, um, which I didn't have a chance to, but I'll let you guys look at this. So that is the um, the impact area. That it will impact a very large, um, I think it's more by a radius.
More than just the.
So it's also, it actually, not only will it be a coastal county, but it will actually go all the way into Marshall County as well, and help with some of those outline areas that are. Um, more rural in nature, so it can be very impactful, and that's the.
Even down, like down even down to the gravel pit.
It goes, you can see it in this heat, Keith, yeah, because all the way down, the outside of the circle is where it goes.
Yeah, you can see it in the picture of like. And I'll forward that to you. I didn't have a chance to forward that to you, because we got it kind of like we're running against the clock trying to get this done, so I was forwarding that information to you, so you can have that as well.
Yeah, I do. And that's it, that is a lot more than what our current siren covers.
Yes, and so, and um, the, the goal is that will be the connection point with Kip and the county is that, um, when the siren is updated, then it will be able to be, um. Dispatch will be able to uh, to set off the tornado versus having to, at the fire department do that, so.
So if they can hear it south of the river, is it gonna break my windows?
Oh, maybe. I don't think so. I would assume that it's probably.
Make sure you pay your insurance, that's all we gotta say. Make sure your insurance pay.
I would assume they wouldn't create one that's like that, because then they would have insurance claims a hundred percent, so. Any questions that you have?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. If there's no guarantees, you better say your prayers, do your rosary, or whatever you do, so that they will let Etna Green come to them.
It's what we're praying for.
We at least are putting the application in, so.
Yep, we're praying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we are going to uh move on to attorney business.
Yeah, so I have an update. Um, when we added this, um, this was to bring the council up to speed on uh concerns that Winona Powder Coating has. About the electricity utility that's provided by the town. Um, this morning, I received a tort claim notice. This is from a law firm who represents Winona Powder Coating. Um, there's an attorney, I believe, here, Paul Jefferson, um, on behalf of SLS Group. So the tort claim notice before a municipality can be sued, uh, one of these notices has to be sent, and they described the, uh, kind of the dispute that's uh ongoing. So I've shared this with the council. Um, it has to do with the electricity and with concerns that Winona Powder has about the electricity utility and with outages. So I would recommend the council, um, that we schedule an executive session, that way we can meet privately, we can talk about, um, the tort claim, talk about litigation, discuss the strategy. Um, I think that'd be our next best step. And so we could schedule that today if everybody has their calendars, or if we wanna do it later, we can do it later. But we will have to publish a advertisement before we have the executive session.
Well, I think we need to set up that executive session so that we can start looking at this. Um, I don't know that, I got my phone turned off and calendar wise is far back those, but I think we can send out a corresponding email. Um, so that we can get this sort of scheduled in and um, and start taking a look at the situation.
Okay. Alright, that all sounds good.
Did the attorney need to say anything then, or?
Uh, it's up to you. He and I spoke today. I, I know what their position is. I can try that with you at the meeting.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if you, yeah.
Paul, is there anything you wanna share today?
I mean, first, I just wanted to share a few things. Um, Winona Powder is, it's a proud citizen of Etna Green. It doesn't want it to skew, man. It, it just what it needs, is, is the accurate term. Its power should work properly. Every time the power goes off, there's just a significant amount of. Of damage that occurs, not only because it's paying employees it can't work, but everything that runs to the factory is actually owned by the clients of Winona Powder. And so when those things get stuck in the machine, they become losses that Winona has to cover in different ways. And so. You know, as I explained earlier, the last thing we want is litigation, but we need to get this issue resolved. And the obvious short-term fix is to allow us to connect to the RMC. I understand there's some issues that you all are working through regarding the grid here, and, and, you know, as you guys work through those, that's great. There's a time we can connect back and avoid these issues. We're certainly open to that. But in the immediate term, we just need to be able to, to service our clients enough. I mean, there's significant contracts that are at risk every time this, this thing happens. There's huge expensive machines that are not being damaged, because when, whether the power goes off forty-five seconds or forty-five minutes. Causes all sorts of concerns for it to turn back on. And so, you know, I, I figured you'd need to go into executive session and deal with that, and. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or provide any information. We're not looking to. Have to deal with this in a, in a place other than in a conversation where everybody kind of moves forward together, but we have to deal with it in one area. And so, um, you know, if you all have any questions for me, I'm happy to try to answer them, or at least get somebody you can, or you can phone them through Nick. Um, and, you know, so obviously our hope that we can just figure out a solution for it, even if it's a short-term solution for now, and come up with a longer-term solution later.
I have one question is that, um, have you guys actually checked into getting emergency backup generators like a lot of businesses do? Um, because a lot of the power problems that we are experiencing uh with MPa, with the town of Etna Green, are actual overall grid problems in the state of Indiana. So it's not necessarily that every time that there's a power glitch, that it's the town of Etna Green, it's the grid, it's the big grid. And it's not necessarily us, it's, you know, it, it's NIPSCO on this side, it's RMC on this side, and all the customers. Um, so and in, in a situation like this, I think the backup generators would be something to really look into and to start securing the equipment in-house. Um, we have protection for you guys, um, but that's what shuts the power off, is the protection. So. I, I think that, you know, that's something that really needs to be looked into in this situation.
My concern is that's been looked into, but I'll, I'll confess, if I were good at math, I'd probably be an engineer and not a lawyer, so I don't really know what that all looks like. Um, I do know that the, I mean, the, the big issue for my client is that when they approach the RMC and ask for similar data regarding outages. There have been four outages that have affected them in the last five years versus however many have occurred in the last six months. And so, um, you know, and so, and there's also a redundancy that they can provide that, as I understand it, you all can right now. Um, I understand that that issue's been looked into, but generators create their own problem in terms of how they switch over and what happens when they switch over. So, um. I only know that because I have.
Barb Sag was in the past, that they, I worked in Donley's third shift for the most of my life, and I would drive from here and we would have electricity here. And I, I don't know how many times I drove into the RMC territory and they'd be dark. That it did, that it did, where we still had power. I mean, it can go either way. It all depends, it a lot depends on where the storms go through and how things work, that they, that. But it did, but there has been many, many times where we've been with power, that they drive from Warsaw and it's just dark all the way, and then they come, they get here. And it's a, and there's power again. So it did, I mean, it's, it's not a blanket thing that we did, that they have less the outages, it's just that they might have been lucky. Compared to they, they, in the last while, they, where, where we get, we get our, they have power from NIPSCO. And if we have power outage up the line, we're out, Bourbon's out, Bremen's out. We did, that there's not a thing we can do until they turn power back on. We have provided the big, the switching equipment, so that. When the power comes on, that their three-phase equipment, three-phase power equipment will not come on and burn out. They complained and complained and complained about that, and we provided that. We fit it first, they went on a court with the, with that three-phase equipment. Once the power comes back on, there is a delay of getting that switched back on, so they can have full three-phase, eh, but that saves. All their motors and everything, which they have complained and complained and complained about, that they did nothing about this. They, they, they complained about all their motors burning out and how much it was calcium, and we set it up, so they were protected against the, against that. Now they, now they, now they're saying that the, the, that protection isn't, eh, isn't right?
That's not exactly the issue. And the issue is, and we're not complaining about issues related to storms, there's issues with the power grid that seem to affect. Etna Green that don't affect others. And so we would like permission to be able to access that grid. And, and we won't do that without your permission. You can't do that without your permission. So, that's what we're asking.
We'll need to get, get a hold of MPa for that, Dave. That they, we should have all the histories on that, as long as, as long as they, we, we are still. Notifying them of every one of our power outages, cause anytime we have anything that we should be notifying them, calling them immediately. And letting them know of anything that happens, so they, so they should have all the records.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll circle back with you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, we are gonna move on to new business. And the first thing on this list of new business is Brittany Lucas is here to talk to us from Kitchens to Go.
Hi, I'm Brittany Lucas. I'm production manager over at Kitchens to Go. We've been around for, I believe, about ten years here in Etna Green. I am a lifelong resident, so it's very important to me to help our community. So I wanted to come to the town and see if you could give permission. For Kitchens to Go to provide not only the labor, but the material for a new kitchen, playhouse, see if I can do it.
So it's just an idea in the end. We obviously would wanna go with kitchen, something, playhouse.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do have a set date. Um, once a year, our meeting gets together. And we do a reunion at our facility here in Etna Green, that would be throughout the country, so we really have a small period of time that we're trying to get it completed in. So I'm just trying to get permission to go forward with that.
Where would this be, be in place at?
That is up to you guys, where you would like us.
So the dates that you have on here, this is when you're wanting to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
When do you?
My suggestion on this is, um, and this is something else I gotta bring up in the meeting or whatever, I finalized signing all the paperwork for the Heritage Park Trail. Um, so if we could maybe try and figure out how to put your project into this project, um, I think that would be a great thing, or if. You're gonna be a little before, I mean, we're gonna start construction hopefully the first week of October, um, on the new Heritage Park walking trail up there. So it's something that we would sort of need to coordinate, or if this could be built, we could do your, the whole thing.
Install later possibly.
And maybe install.
Build at our facility, store it at our facility. We're looking right behind one on a, like.
Right, oh no, I've been out there, I've done work with you guys before in the past, so, um.
So it doesn't have to be built on-site, Dave? It could be, it's just.
We can tr- yeah, we can transfer it actually.
That they, I mean, that they, and that would be, be a great thing to, they, for in addition to our walking trail, Dave, that they, for the, for the Heritage Park. That they, I, I just didn't know if you guys had the vision of where it needed to be, that they, where, where you were thinking of.
We would like to see if our, this is definitely for kids, so we need to go along with the project, either, so how, uh, maybe to move forward. I, I have a great idea, but.
The other thing would be to put it over here on the backside somewhere, but I think if they, having it along the walking trails. That would be, as long as it's out of the way of the ball fields, that would be, that's, that would be, eh, that would be great position, that they. But it's just be a matter of fitting it in, yeah, being we're starting construction here soon. That it, I don't think you wanna put it there and then get it run over by a bulldozer.
Usually playhouses are for smaller kids, and we have that smaller playground.
Right.
You might put it over in that area.
So that's something that, I mean, we can coordinate.
Cause the parents would wanna be close.
East of the clubhouse, eh, east of the, um, concession stand.
Right there with that smaller.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be, that would be within the.
Where the parents would be right there with them.
That would be in the, in the walking trail area, that they, yeah, that they, so, yeah.
Do you have a size on what you're thinking for this?
No, we are, that again, we will have you guys lead direction on that. If we build any good things that are to be dealing with or larger.
Right, oh yeah, yeah.
Uh, so we'll, we wanna do something that works for the town.
I just.
Is that a reward or are you making?
That's always the goal.
Very small holders, keep, you know, keep.
My suggestion with it being for, if it's specifically for the little kids, is that we do do it in the section up there that is for little kids, but I might suggest that maybe, so that we don't make this a giant. If maybe we could get some twenty-four by twenty-four pavers and put it in the actual playground facility, if we can figure out how to add it in there. So if we could pull some pea gravel back, throw some, some twenty-four by twenty fours, you know, if we can do, however big you want, and sort of put that down for a foundation. And then you guys could set it in the park with the other kids' stuff, and then that way it would just sort of integrate into our playground equipment that we have.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Do we need a motion to accept this, if they? Oh, we can. I mean, I, I make a motion that, uh, we are going to work with Kitchens to Go and with Brittany, and, uh, we're gonna try and figure out how to.
I can make sure I'm here the next week, the next.
That would be before these dates.
And by now, we're gonna go ahead and start purchasing some materials, and with some more information in Etna Green.
But yeah, I, I make a motion that we're gonna work with Kitchens to Go on adding this to our playground equipment of the park, at the Heritage Park.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the next meeting will be the fourteenth of October, so.
Alright, see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. This isn't as fun as that one. Um. We're going to, uh, this consideration to renew the internal, in, in Terra Letter of Credit for the USDA Rural Development. Um, and what I need to is I need to read this and I need the board to approve it. Uh, the board approves renewing the letter of credit at Intera Credit Union with no charges. Um, and just a little back history, this was done in the past. It's sort of expiring from what I've read from all of this, and so we need to reapprove it, so that we have, um.
It's like every year, every year we have to redo this, that they, and they.
The last one was done in two thousand twenty, I think, is what I read today when we went over this, but.
But yeah, regu- but it regularly needs to be updated until it's paid off. But the, but the, this, uh, um. Letter of credit to Dave, the, the loan Dave from the, the Rural Development, the USDA, they, that. Winona Corp is paying all the fees and, and I'm not sure what it, how much it is, but we do get a bit small. Like a stipend that they, uh, that for doing this. That it's a, so there's absolutely, absolutely no cost to us. That they, they, they're paying it off and they're paying the, the interest rates and all associated fees. So that it they, that I don't see any reason why we would want to quit doing this.
I make a motion that the board approves renewing the letter of credit for Terra Credit Union.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, need to, new business, uh, I signed a contract with Eileen Hall, um, so that she can do training, um, for a deputy clerk. So that needs to be put in the minutes and needs to be added. Um, so that was done. And then the next one that we have on here is we need to set the date for Halloween, the date and the time. Um, does anybody have a problem with us doing it on Halloween, on Friday the thirty-first?
Uh, yeah, that is, uh, football day that they, that, um, I was checking with Jeff, um, Hoffman. And that they're, they're doing the hayride. We, the, the last number of years we've been doing it on the Saturday, either Saturday prior or the Saturday right after, the day close to. And, um, that they, and if, if we do it on Friday, it really cuts down on the number of people that are in town. And it cuts down, uh, on the number of people that get the, um, go to the hayride, to their, to their project. That it, it helps out both if we do it on Saturday and the, and Saturday the first is the day after Halloween. I would think would be the perfect date. I called Jeff and they said they, they would be, they would do the hayride either the twenty-fifth or the first. But the, but if the first would be preferable.
Go ahead, Dave.
I would have to agree with him. The Friday night would not be a good one. Like, like you said, a lot of people are going to be at football games all over the place.
When we, when I was in Lions Club and we did the, um, the hayride on Friday, we wouldn't have enough people to build even one wagon. Where I guess now they've been doing like two and three wagons and doing, and I, I, I heard last year they had to do two different rounds that they had so many people.
Well, last year, trip and freeers, we had almost two hundred kids.
Okay. Well, I make a motion and then we make it on the first.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll get published. Um, it's usually what, five to?
Five, the five or five forty till seven. That last year it was five till seven to do.
Okay, the, uh, next one on the list here is the Ashbury hydrant flushing water dates will be September twenty-second through twenty-sixth and October sixth through the tenth. And just so everybody knows, it takes a little longer to fill or to flush the hydrants here in town. Um, just bringing everybody up to notice, the town is down to one well that we use right now. So it takes a while, um, to go through and flush all the hydrants and do it properly to make sure that we're pushing everything out of the system. Um, it used to be that both wells were turned on at once when we flushed the wells and it only took a couple of days. Well, we're no longer able to do that with the situation that we have with the wells right at the moment. Um, so that's why this well flushing takes a little bit longer and I just want everybody to understand why. Um, it takes longer now than what it used to back in, you know, when we had both wells up and running properly.
What are the dates?
They are September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth and October sixth through the tenth.
We're gonna send out a reach alert and also on Facebook.
And then we can also put it on the electric bills too.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
Yeah, well, the, well, we can at least get the Octobers, you know, they'll get to see those dates, um, on there.
And the reach alerts are fantastic.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go back to a little bit what I already said during the meeting ahead of time. Uh, last Friday, I signed all the finalized paperwork for this Heritage Park walking trail. Um, so I'm supposed to be meeting with Brooks, um, so that we can start getting things set up. Hopefully we're gonna break ground first week of October. That's sort of the plan. Um, we're sort of gonna have to have a really quick groundbreaking, so I don't know if Liz, I don't know, who do we get ahold of for that one? Or do I get ahold of you then, or? Okay, so who did, cause we're gonna sort of push this through pretty quick as far as on that part goes, but we're gonna want everybody to know. But we are gonna move forward on this project. Everything that you see here in yellow, we're gonna have about a half a mile's worth of, uh, eight-foot wide walking trail that I've been working on and everything. This is at absolutely no cost to anybody here in the town of Edin Green. And so this is a two hundred thousand dollar project right here. And what we've been able to do with this one is we've been able to take this one and use it with CAP. So we use this grant to match with CAP. So we're gonna get a third phase into this pro, into this project here. And we're gonna get another two hundred thousand dollars to add into this park. So after this phase one is done, we're gonna have a small second phase, which is gonna be bushes and park benches and that kind of stuff. But then we're gonna move into phase three, which is gonna be another two hundred thousand dollars, um, that is gonna be put into this park here. And we are gonna want a little bit of community, you know, response and, and people's ideas and stuff like that or whatever. But, um, I'm just really excited. This has been a lot of work, um, as far as planning and pushing it and deadlines, and it's gonna happen this fall. So.
I'm in favor as long as the old witch is asked, Mary Barrow.
You guys stop poking me about that. Okay, we'll see.
I agree.
Go ahead, Andy.
Uh, related to that, I did, um, believe in Susie, let you know that we don't have to ask her for a fund because they're gonna pay for the K twenty-one funds.
Direct.
Directly. I also checked with Community Foundation as well. From what I understand, uh, I talked to Stephanie O'Leary, uh, yesterday at the, uh, at the Goon Center or Goon Health. And she indicated the same name. So for that, that's the first and the second phase. So I understand we will not have to have separate funds unless Annie wanted to be, but I would.
I think she's a little overwhelmed right now with what she's doing, so.
Susie and I talked about it and I think that, you know, it's all because you're comfortable, the money basically will come to Edin Green and go directly to. So I believe you'll just have to have seven and it will, they'll pay you directly, from the first phase and then second phase. Or you have about third or fourth phase.
Yep. Go ahead, Chris.
Keith, uh, is the, uh, the town looking for donations for, uh, park benches and other items to help support this project?
We do have, um, I, I, we have some residents here in town that have already put a fund together to buy a, a park bench for John F. Felder. If there's other people in the community that wanna come forward and would like to have a park bench that's commemorated. Or even if Kitchens to Go wants to have their own hidden park bench of their own, um, maybe even Winona Powder Court. They want some of their own park benches up here at this park. We would definitely be very interested in, uh, in everybody in the community being involved in it. Um, the second phase does not have as much money in it, um, so that one there would, would be great to, to get more people in the community involved in that.
Would the money actually go to the town of Edin Green?
What's that?
Would the money come to the town of Edin Green?
I'm not sure how we've, like I said, I have some, a group here. That's the whole, you do that kind of stuff, but Chris does, yeah, so.
If it comes, then we have to do the fund.
Then we'll have to do the fund for that unless we figure out how to let each group purchase their own.
You could always give them, like, you could choose.
The invoice?
Bench.
Right.
Well, you could choose a bench, like what, uh, Metto's doing is they're choosing a bench and then you could say, this is what we want.
Okay.
Have and have them pay for it.
Okay.
This, this may be a great collaboration with the Community Foundation, basically for, is there a five oh one three?
See, correct.
Where, I'm trying to think of what direction you're going.
Tax basis.
Well, for the funds accumulated for the park, if you set up an account with them, all the funds come in there and then they'll disperse it out for you.
They do have a two percent, like, a two percent, like, uh, administration fee that they do charge for that. So it'd be better, cause that's why I did talk to Stephanie about that for something else. And they are happy to do that, their two percent. They have to take two percent off the top of every donation to, for the administration fee. So if you could do it.
It's like a wish wa, I mean, do we run it through here and take up our time or just let them? I mean, if it's only two percent.
Or do you just like say this is a bench that we are, is the town wants and please purchase this and we'll install it. And you could also do that and you don't have any money that's like, I mean, honestly.
Just have it dedicated to this person or that person.
Well, as long as it's like, this is, so if I understand correctly, like the benches would be, so you're gonna pay for a certain amount of benches within eighteen, whatever.
Seventeen five.
And so any additional ones, you could say this is the bench that we are using. If your organization or community or whatever would like to do a bench, here's the bench that we are asking them to purchase. And they can purchase it themselves.
That way they also stay the same.
Could we have the money donated to the, eh, the Heritage Park Fund that they just do for, for that budget? And then they specify to be used for things in the park?
I don't think there is an actual fund that is, the fund that, um, Annie and I have looked at. It is a fund that, so the funds, cause I have it right here.
It's part of the budget.
Well, it's two two zero four and from what Annie and I had looked at, it was really more for the execution of, like, the, um, the, I think it's the community building, right? So it was more for that versus like an actual fund related to the park. So, so that has a separate fund if you want to, but we're trying to keep Annie from having to do that as a whole.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay, that's.
Not, I mean, you can, I'm not saying you can't keep, I'm just saying that.
I understand now, I understand what you're saying about the, the, the building or the park.
Cause Annie and I are looking into it, which is what Susie was looking into. I had a conversation with Keith as well. Is that this fund looks like it is for operations of like the building and like those maintenance things, not really like an actual park fund per se. It's in the park and recs, you know, D L G F and state board accounts, like cross reference. But it specifically seems to be for the operations, not for capital expenditures.
So we can have a separate fund for executions?
Okay, all right, Dave. We're cutting you off, David. Okay, let's move on. Let's move on. We're gonna move on to, uh, old business. Uh, do we have anything in old business that we need to go over? Anything?
Okay, I, I wanted to say out loud just really quick for the minutes, um, just to tie it out for Annie. Is that Annie and I received confirmation from the county auditor that she is clear and clean and done with the Edin Green year. So that is tied up.
Okay.
Beautiful tie. Ever since from that, we have officially finished that. It's zeroed out and we are good to go. So we have officially like met our expectations and are done.
With paperwork, yes. And while we're talking about donations and stuff like that or whatever, we did have somebody that had come in, um, this last month and gave a donation. Um, of a hundred dollars towards the, the fountain up here, um, just to bring everybody up to speed on that. The, the brand new pump is sitting over there, but we're not gonna hook it all up and get it all ready just to shut it down here real soon. Cause we actually need to shut it down right now. So the new pump for the fountain will be installed in the spring when it's back up and the fountain will be back up and going. But we did have an individual that came in and donated a hundred dollars towards that, um, that wanted to see, you know, help make that happen and everything. But the town, like I said, we've already ordered it. Uh, and Chris helped, um, find the part numbers and who to get it from. Um, he's the water guy, but anyways. So we got that going on. So now we're gonna move on. We've moved past old business, um.
Pete, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so, you know, I'm looking at the information you gave me here. And I know we've had some environmental response letters that, that Brady Dryer's working on. I'd like to propose an on-call agreement with the town with them not to exceed them out. Meaning this would be something that we can take a look at, this issues at the wastewater treatment plant. Cause there's, there's gonna have to be an engineer involved in this.
Involved in that. I think, I mean, you talked about this like a year ago, signing this.
We did, and with that, uh, I probably would post ten thousand, but anything past that, it is, or any major expenses associated with that. You guys all be aware of it.
It comes back to the board, yes.
And for some reason we have a bigger project past that and you guys are all in control of that. That way it gives you guidance and clear vision of what, what, uh, the on-call agreement would be. And it would help us take care of some of these smaller incidents.
Like that, cause like, yeah, that does need engineer, cause they're gonna have to deal with I D M on figuring out if we can switch those tanks for that procedure there.
Yeah, and I know we have an issue here with the wastewater, one, the, the main lift station or patrol panel. This would probably benefit you to look at those controls here with an electrical engineer.
Yep, yep.
Which we have on staff, um, which may have initially resolved this. So if the council's willing, I'd like to propose, you know, pulling together an agreement for next month for you guys to review. I'll have the information to you beforehand.
Take a look like that. Good idea. Like I said, I mean, you talked about this like a year ago, I think, as far as that thing, so.
Doing that is not just a, eh, it's gonna cost to be, to have the engineering studies on things.
Yeah, on this one here, this is a one-off. Okay, it's not, it's not long-term. It's not, you're still focused on the planning study for the big picture. This is the one, and everything looks like it'd benefit. But I know that my time's not billable, but the engineers' time's, they'll have to, they'll have to place this someplace.
Nope, sounds like, so you're gonna get something together for us to sign next month, is what you're saying. Okay.
Sounds good.
Yep, very good. Okay, next we're gonna move on to employee comments. That'd be Richard. Richard, what you got for us? Anything?
Well, I'm working on a lot of different things. As Pete said, the fountain, regretfully, I know a lot of people like it. I like it myself. I enjoy taking care of it, surprisingly. Um, as Pete said, we have the pump. It is in the park shop. It is waiting for installation. You know, it's kind of ridiculous to go ahead and install it as he said, when I have, you know, put everything.
Wrong time of year for doing that.
And I'm hoping that in the spring, either sometime this fall before the weather starts getting colder. That I can do a little bit of upgrading to the fountain, like painting the inside of it. Cause the paint is shipped and getting things in there cleaned up and looking nicely. And, uh, putting new lights in it as well so that the fountain lights up nice.
Before it gets too cold.
And, you know, just looks really good for the community.
Are you still taking donations for that pump?
No, the pump is paid.
The pump is paid for.
The pump is paid for.
Does it cost, are you still taking donations?
Well, the next thing is gonna be, we're gonna get a professional plumber to actually install the pump. So it, it, it's been worked on and worked on and worked on and worked on. And it's got a bunch of PVC fittings that have been cut and glued and cut and glued. And it needs cut off and it needs all new PVC and needs installed properly, so. The prop, the proper way, by a good plumber. Yeah, it's been drilled on and it's been worked on and drilled on and, yes, it's been in there for a long time. And I know it's been taken out a number of times and then rebuilt and put back in.
Yeah, the pump was beyond repair, the original pump, so that's why we purchased the new pump. And, uh, we're, I'm working on getting that straightened out. Oh, let's see, working on trying to get things ready for the walking track in the park. We've had all kinds of, um, work done from EMPA here in town. We've had, uh, poles that have been leaning for a while.
We just got five new poles just last week.
Five new poles placed in this town. They are straight. They are brand new. Um, we've upgraded a few things, had some lights changed. Oh, let's see, we're working on cleaning up, uh, well, I'm not working on cleaning up some of the bushes and the trees around town. Um, I'm only one day available, please.
We're getting there.
I'm trying.
We're getting there. We're getting there, so, okay. Uh, next one we're gonna move on to is council comments. Does council have any other comments for us tonight?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Well, unless, is anybody else out here? Sometimes I forget it cause it's not on here. Does anybody else out here have anything to say or wanna ask any questions? Go ahead. You got more jokes for me, don't you?
My question is what I asked before. Is the town accepting donations to help offset costs in that home?
We can, yes, we can. So, or we can take donations if you wanna go towards the park and then that kind of stuff, get your name on something. We've got a lot of stuff going on with this right here, so.
As when I, when I was in Lions Club, I always said that all donations are appreciated. And if somebody wants to donate something, it's always appreciated.
Just need to make sure that the person that's donating is.
Can we find out what the cost is on the benches that you're talking about too?
That's phase two. As soon as this pavement is done, I will be all over that. That's my next part. So I will be, so give me, as soon as this pavement is done, then phase two, I'm gonna start pricing all this stuff and figuring out which park benches we're gonna get. Maybe some lighting, what bushes, what signs, so that's all, that's all part of that, so. Go ahead.
On the east side, on the east side of the graveyard.
Yes.
The south side of the road, the road is very narrow.
Yes.
It would be nice to get some of those bushes to turn back, cause this is about to take my name in at all.
So you're saying they're gonna grow out into the road?
Yes.
Okay.
If you'll give me a hedge for her, I'll do it.
Oh, we'll get Richard to do it, or we'll get Keith to do it, they'll take care of it, so. Oh, that is right though, that is, but.
That's a county issue.
That's county, but we'll work on it, we'll get it worked in somehow.
North side of the road or the south side of the road?
South side.
South side, yeah, that's that's county, once you get to the, once you get to the cemetery on the south side, it's county.
Okay, we'll, we'll get something going on there, I know a guy. Go ahead Nick.
I had a couple things, one of them, I asked this several years ago, there's um a few derelict properties in this town. Do we have any way of getting these things cleaned up?
It's gonna be a Nick question, Nick and I.
Yeah, I mean, there are options, there are ordinances out there that talk about the condition that property's supposed to be in, they talk about how a property can become a nuisance, so there are things that can be done. It depends, if some of them, the property owner has passed away, and there's nobody else who's living there, and there's no family that's stepping in, that can be a difficult situation. But if somebody's still living there, yeah, there's things that can be done for that.
Well, a couple of them that that are my concern, because it's my neighborhood, I take care of my property, two doors down that way.
Yep, that was last year.
Uh two years ago or last year, I made a complaint, they came in and cleaned up all the brush and everything around it, and now it's right back in the same shape.
I just spoke with that property owner today.
Yeah.
Uh I'll talk with you later on that.
The house right here in the corner, says the Beth died, supposedly it's a reverse mortgage, nothing's been done.
It needs mow, and she needs a letter that she needs to mow it, so.
Here's Tony's house, Tony's old house, it looks like a dump, it looks like a.
They moved out.
I was being taken care of as well, I spoke with the homeowner of the house this evening, that is in the process of being cleaned up this coming week, if not this week, next week.
From, from the council's point, the council's been very busy with the whole changing of the garden up here, so we haven't had, yes, but it needs to be addressed. And the people here in town need to take care of their properties, they, we need to stay on top of it, we don't need junk cars sitting around, we don't want these properties over, you know, overgrown and falling apart. Yards not mowed, I mean, a lot of us take a lot of time to keep nice properties, this is a nice community, and we're we're gonna stick Nick on this, we're we're gonna get there, since we're busy with lots of things that we're working on. Right, you understand.
And the other thing is, is just was brought up at the beginning of this meeting, because this is, I have heard this a couple nights with different board members, that supposedly an email was sent out. And I'm saying there's not, but the people didn't get it. So is there a way that we can, when we have to notify um the town board members or anybody of a meeting, that they have to reply to that to make sure they got the message?
I've said all along texting is a lot better way of contacting me than emails.
It should be email.
I I made sure.
They need to respond, that they got the message.
Should be a letter.
Because it's happened with other board members.
It has, oh, it has.
It's a mail certified one.
There needs to be a, just a check out, it shouldn't, doesn't have to be.
When I, when I, when I sent an email out, I normally would, I would submit that and say, please confirm if you've been attended, so.
I'm not gonna.
That doesn't confirm that I did, I didn't even have to read it to know that, but it's, I might can or can't.
Well, there's another meeting next Thursday at ten o'clock, Keith, so don't miss that one.
Hey, Anne, can you give a review receipt on that one?
So that's it, what is that for? Next Thursday.
No, it's this Thursday, not this Thursday.
This Thursday.
This is this Thursday. But the email's sent out and that's all, it's, it says all of them.
It says like, you have to confirm.
Now your name was on there, I see.
Or reply or confirm or whatever, just so you know, everybody's notified, then you won't have to say anything.
Yep.
That's it, that's all I have. He needs that on his texts.
Right, we're not doing text, that's unprofessional, but anyways, all right, anybody else have anything else for this meeting? Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.